What about him? He was just like looking through the straw. The view it gives, yeah, didn't get it. Like what your eyes give you.
The thing is, is having to worry about that is more important. The average turnover takes maybe two to three seconds. That's so hard.
Let me worry about this.
The view it gives, like looking through the straw, the view it gives, yeah, didn't get it. Like what your eyes give you.
The thing is, is having to worry about that is more important. The average turnover takes maybe two to three seconds. That's so hard.
I'll say a few words about the decorum and the rules that I have put into place. I believe that everyone has received a handout of the rules, but for those of you that have not, the error is follows. There will be absolutely no signs, props, or any other media, other than which can be displayed on the overhead projector during the presentations allowed in the council chambers. Items displayed on the overhead projector must be removed from the projector at the end of the person's public comment. Only the individuals whom the council president has called to provide public comment may stand at the podium. Multiple persons will not be permitted to stand behind the presenters. The only exception will be for those who need a translator or reasonable accommodations to provide public comment. The two-minute time limit for public comment will be strictly enforced. Public comment must be directed to the council through the council president, not at staff or not at the audience. There will be no tolerance for disruptive public outbursts. The handicap landing area to the right side of the dais must be kept clear at all times. Those desiring to record the meeting will be directed to the landing area on the left side of the dais. The fire marshal will strictly enforce ingress and egress of these rules so as to ensure public safety. I will provide one warning to anyone who violates any of these rules. Upon the second violation, that individual will be asked to leave the chambers and, if necessary, will be escorted out of the chambers. If continued disruptions occur, I may recess the meeting until order is restored and, if necessary, may clear the chambers of persons participating in the disturbance. Any person who violates these rules may be cited for trespassing. At this time, I would like our city attorney, Detective Wheeler, to come up for just a moment to talk about some of the rules here this evening. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. President. Everything seems to be in compliance now. One thing I do see is there can be no insignia, signs, documentation, anything attached to city property. So, for example, this document or this flag behind me needs to be removed. Other than that, the chambers appear to be in compliance with this.
I'm not sure who the flag belongs to, but based on the current rules I'm asking, and I'm not sure who the flag belongs to, but please remove that flag.
Yes, sir.
This is a warning. This is a second warning. If not, I would ask the staff to please remove that flag.
You have a flag behind you, Counselor President.
That has been there, sir. I'd ask security to please remove the flag.
That's my flag.
That is part of the view, if you would, to be able to remove the flag. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we are with your proclamation and presentation. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite members of the Girding family, Bob Girding's family, who are here this evening, that would be Harry Girding, Bob's wife, and Dick Girding, Bob's brother.
Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Stryker?
They're on the way down.
Fine, thank you. Well, thank you for taking the time to be here this evening to present to the City Council. Both states, your full name and the rest of the procedure.
Mr. President, members of the City Council of Albuquerque, my name is Scott Greenwood. I am a civil rights lawyer by training and profession. With me this evening is my own adversary and now my partner in working on police community relations and police accountability and oversight issues, Thomas Stryker. I want to thank the council in particular for having us here this evening. The mayor has instructed me to make our team available to you, both in these proceedings formally and when you require briefing on a confidential basis, pending litigation and executive session as well. We're here because we're at the outset of the process, the process in Albuquerque that has led to federal intervention in the oversight of Albuquerque Police Department. It is not an enviable position for any city to find something, but that is where we are. The good news is you are not alone. This city is not the first to face federal intervention, and it certainly will not be the last. But there have been so many questions about the process, what it entails, what happens next, that we thought it would be helpful, based on the president's invitation to address the council, to walk you through what happens. What happens in a patterned practice investigation is the Department of Justice launches an investigation when they have some credible evidence that there is a pattern or a practice on a law enforcement agency engaging in systemic violations of people's constitutional rights. That's the beginning. They come to town, they look at documents, they interview people, they talk to a lot of people, and ultimately they write a report, which they call a findings letter. Albuquerque received that findings letter on April 10th, and on April 10th, I think, the world changed in Albuquerque because there was suddenly much more information than we had before, that your community had before, about what some of the issues were for oversight of APD and the issues that the federal government would like to have addressed. So, the issue of findings letter, the findings letter is not a court order. It is not a mandate. It is not something that requires the city to do anything. But what it is, is the point of departure. It's where we start. It's where we start talking about what the universe of issues may be as identified by the federal government, and where we start speaking with our colleagues at the federal government about ways to address them. So, what happens next in the process is this very week, in fact, today, we expected to receive a draft from the Department of Justice of what an agreement would look like between the federal government and the city of Albuquerque. We don't have that yet. When we do receive that, that's just what it is. It's a draft. It's not an order, it's not a court order, it's a draft. And like all good lawyers, we then look at these drafts, and we exchange ideas, and we start the process of discussing with each other the types of reforms that are necessary for an agreement between the federal government and Albuquerque that will address the issues that have been identified, but will lead to a pathway for success for this city and this community. That's a negotiated process. And when we're there, eventually, we will end up with something that we will recommend to the administration, and we will recommend to this council that you adopt as an official act of the city of Albuquerque to enter into with the federal government. And it will commit you to very specific reforms and mandates that will be measured, and will be measured by a monitor. A court monitor is picked by the parties typically. It's not somebody that the city picks, it's not somebody the Department of Justice picks, it's not imposed. The parties can't agree on the monitor, then usually a judge gets to make that decision. And then we begin the process, the tough process of implementation. That process typically lasts five years. That's the baseline in all of the reform processes that the Department of Justice is currently engaged in. Five years is the term of the agreement. Sometimes you get an early exit. Sometimes if you're not making a significant progress, you get an extension. Well, that's what the process generally looks like. That's what it looks like in most communities. We believe that there is the ability in Albuquerque to do something a little bit different, a little bit bolder, a little bit like what we did a dozen years ago in our own community. And it is to have an ongoing discussion with members of the stakeholders in policing in Albuquerque to make it better. So, we don't end up with an agreement that lasts five years that has oversight and that ends up with the federal government going away and reforms that may or may not be sustainable. We believe that to sustain change in APD and indeed at the city level, we have to engage the broader community in conversation, the people who are stakeholders in policing. And we call that a collaborative process. It involves having stakeholders in policing, stakeholders such as your neighborhood associations, civil rights advocates, community members, people who may not speak English as their first language, ethnic and racial minorities, religious leaders, business leaders, and, yes, the police department and police families involved in a conversation about the types of reforms that they would like to see in this agreement and the types of ideas that they have for their goals for reforming police community relations in Albuquerque. Yes, we can make, and the city can make and will make fixes to things like policies and procedures and protocols, but the underlying issue that leads to unrest, the unrest in policing in the community is police community relations. That is a harder problem to fix, but it's a more important problem to fix. So, when we talk about a collaborative process, we really are talking about a broader process to gather ideas from the entire Albuquerque community about what ought to be in this agreement and what are some ideas for things that shouldn't be in the agreement, things that may go beyond an agreement that still impact issues of civil rights and crime and disorder and police community relations in Albuquerque. That's a process that we engaged in a dozen years ago, and I'm pleased to say it actually worked. We took a city that I and other civil rights advocates considered one of the worst police departments in America and turned it into one where allegations about use of force and excessive force and use of deadly force completely changed. It changed the landscape of police community relations. Some of the harshest critics of policing in Cincinnati became some of its biggest supporters. We've seen efforts like this in some of the other cities that have faced federal interventions. There are different models to follow. In Seattle, for example, you had a very combative police department that wanted to fight for over a year about what was in the findings letter. That's not ultimately a very fruitful process. And then they created a process for a community council for ongoing community involvement. And I think we're here to tell you the problems that you face as a city are solvable. They're solvable, they're fixable. You're in a crisis now, and that's understandable, but the crisis can be fixed. But the bigger job is not just addressing each individual crisis, it's at changing and really transforming the agency and transforming the city so that the relationship between residents of Albuquerque and the police department with city by extension is completely different. I'll ask my colleague, Chief Stryker, to offer a few words on the process as well.
Chief Stryker, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the entire council, thank you for allowing to be here. I think it's encouraging that during the entire day today, starting at 6:00 a.m. this morning, we met with hundreds and hundreds of police officers at the police academy today, and we discussed with them the exact same process that Mr. Greenwood just described for you here today at council. And one of the things that I walk away from there with is a very good feeling and a confident feeling that your officers are still proud of the uniform they wear or proud of their association with the city of Albuquerque, in fact, their employment with the city of Albuquerque. And I think it's fair to say that they are objective about moving forward, and that's a key point in leading to the success of this type of a process, that they are firmly committed to this process and they are firmly committed to the roof of office here. And I think even more importantly, they're firmly committed to this entire community. That's our take from the discussions that we had today, and I would offer to you that with true support from the city, that the city of Albuquerque can be as successful or more successful than any other city has been across the United States of America. I think all the tipping points are lining in the right way. I truly believe that there is a process that we can engage in and that we can see true success and that things can get better here. And looking back a little bit and recollecting from where we came from all the way back in 2001, where Scott said we were kind of the scourge of the nation in terms of policing in Cincinnati, and it affected us dramatically in terms of economic impact, in terms of reputation, in terms of image, not just in our region, but globally. I see you in the same place at this point. That's a difficult situation to be in. In fact, getting out of that situation is akin to pushing water uphill at times. So, it's a difficult process, and it's a process that really requires everybody who has a stake in it to immerse themselves in that process, be part of it, take ownership of this process, and with that type of commitment, with that type of effort, you can be successful. We believe that we're seeing the basis, the foundation for that type of effort here, and we want to thank you for allowing us to be part of this process up to this point.
Are there any questions for Mr. Greenwood or Mr. Stryker? Counselor, go to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Stryker. Thank you for being here. I think it's important that we have this dialogue, if you will, but it's even more important that we continue to be involved as we go forward. One of the concerns I've had is that there's been a lot of discussion, including journal paper reports that do have some discussions with numerous folks, and yet I don't know of a counselor that has had the opportunity to speak with either one of you directly about the issue, certainly not about the ongoing. And see, I refuse to call them negotiations because I don't believe that we're here to negotiate. We're here to understand what the problems are, what the DOJ has to offer in their observations, and to take the report for what it is, a very detailed analysis of what happened. So, I think the city's position should be that we are going to listen and we're going to pay attention to what we've been told by folks who have done this before. So, to that, let me just ask you very quickly, how long have you been in business, both of you, for this kind of business?
I practiced constitutional law for 25 years. He's been a police executive. He was chief for 12 years. We've worked together on policing issues during 12 years of that time together informally. We formed a company a couple of years ago specifically. I do want to mention a point because it's exactly the right perspective. We're not entering, I mean formally, the negotiations, but what we're really doing is we're working with our colleagues, people who have studied the issue, people who have been here since I'm on the ground, work with the community, work with the city, work with the department. We're working with our colleagues at the Department of Justice to create a pathway to success, to create, to craft an agreement that is not just something that's punitive, but something that is effective and achievable. Because I don't want to look back at you in five years and say, you had this great opportunity and you blew it. That's not to your advantage, that's not to our advantage. I want your city to have the same opportunities to succeed that I think we built into our process a dozen years ago, and we did that by being bold. We did it by being out there, by listening to our community very, very broadly, not just listening to a few experts, not just listening to me as the chief civil rights lawyer at the time in town, not just listening to people who sometimes felt aggrieved, but by listening to the entire community. So, we got everybody's input, everybody's input, and you can have the same thing.
Mr. President, if I could just follow up with a question. Another question, and that is, did you reach out to the city or did the city engage the two of you?
The city actually reached out to us twice. When this process started, when you first got the letter from the Department of Justice, your former chief specifically sought us out and asked, what happens? What happens? That was a recommendation by the Department of Justice that they reach out to us. We didn't hear anything for a year and a half, and then suddenly I get a phone call from the mayor. And it's out of the box for a city to be so bold as to put a former police chief and a hardcore, plainish civil rights lawyer onto a team and say, help us fix our problems because you know what to do.
And so, you entered a contract with the city, is that correct?
We have, we have an initial contract with the city, yes.
How much of that has been expended, do you know?
We haven't built the city yet at all.
So, we could carry this $70,000 for the next five years?
You won't, as a practical matter, unfortunately.
So, who do you work for?
We work for the city of Albuquerque, and we're appointed by the mayor and the administration. And the way I see this representation is our role to represent the city of Albuquerque, capital C, and the people of Albuquerque.
Well, I'm hard to hear that.
People of Albuquerque.
I'm hard to hear that because I think one of the misconceptions or maybe misinformation was that you worked, if not for the mayor, certainly from the mayor's perspective. But I want to lay that out so that if that's the truth, then I want to push back, and if it's anything like that, I want to push back. But if you're indeed interested in working for the city, then this is part of the city.
We absolutely agree, and that's why, that's why we're instruct, that's why the mayor has instructed me to make our team available to you on demand, individually and on demand.
Mr. President, I have a couple of other questions.
Look, proceed then, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Stryker, thank you. Appreciate your words, and we've, this council has heard from the public for about three years now regarding this issue, and members of this council, I think, were some of the first to say that we felt that there were systemic violations of people's constitutional rights, but the venue, the venue for the public has been these council meetings for three years. And we have implemented, we passed bills, we've been doing the reforms, we've made recommendations to the Police Oversight Commission, and really grappling with as much as we can do, we want to take action and do that. But I think it's significant to note that the findings from the DOJ report were many of the things that we've been echoing and saying for several years now. So, I guess my question to you would be, the venue, the venue of the public to share their frustration or to vocalize their thoughts has been these council meetings. And you mentioned that you really want to hear from the public, and I'm not sure if even the administration has heard from the public like this council has heard from the public in that way. So, what would be some of your recommendations of truly providing the kind of venues and the opportunities for the public to feel like it's not just at these council meetings that they're expressing their thoughts, but they're really being heard?
There are a couple of ideas in there, council member, that I really want to respond to. Yes, we're very aware that this council has been working on these issues for this period of years. We're aware of the efforts that you've made. We're aware that this is a special concern for the city council as the governing body of the city of Albuquerque. And you are going to be key to any solution. Because any solution that we, that the lawyers create, that the experts like policing chiefs and other experts the DOJ has, any solution that we craft will ultimately require some legislative action. There are some things that can only be done through this council. We can write them into agreements, but that won't happen unless you adopt them. So, we really will need you to play a strong role in this process. So, that's why I welcome that question. Now, what can we do for more public input? What you are seeing in Albuquerque is exactly what we saw a dozen years ago. The people, the constituency I represented, the families of people who were shot and killed by Cincinnati police officers are people who believe that they were the victims of police misconduct, regularly came to city council meetings to share their grief, their frustration, and sometimes their anger, again and again and again. And that is important for them, it is important for you to hear them, it is important for us to hear them. But when we talk about truly hearing the community, yes, we want some people to have some venting sessions because that's necessary. That doesn't always have to happen in a council meeting. But more importantly, we want to get stakeholder groups, when I say stakeholders, I mean groups of people who are affinity-based or associationally-based together so that we have them work specifically on consensus goals for what they want to see policing look like in this city and what they want to see police community relations look like in this city. Because we know, when we looked in Ohio, when I was with you, Ohio ACOU is its general counsel, I looked at all of the police agreements that had been put into place, either through DOJ work or the work of our other ACOU affiliates around the country, and what I found really sort of astonished me, it's that most of those agreements are top-down, they're just dictated as they were in the timeframe, negotiated executive to executive, lawyer to lawyer, and they left out the two groups of people who were most impacted by policing. They left out the residents of the city and they left out the officers who would have to implement any reforms. So, we thought it was critical in our reform process to have those groups directly, directly involved in community input. So, we knew that by the time we went into negotiating an agreement, we knew what they wanted. We've had that information, and we could make recommendations and negotiate with our counterparts at the city, with the Department of Justice, and with our SOP, our police unit, so that we could wind up with an agreement that we all believe was best for the people of Cincinnati. And that's what we propose doing in Albuquerque. So, Chief Stryker, we talked about the importance of having line officers and having community input in this process rather than just having it be the experts and lawyers.
The critical part of that's published in the process, the goal of the process and identifying goals, I think, came as a shock and a surprise to everybody. That is, is that the line of police officers who engaged in the process and the residents who engaged in the process, especially those who are most directly affected by police operations, both identified the exact same goal that they were seeking to the end, at the end of this process, and that is mutual respect for each other. Each party that was involved in this process identified mutual respect, and that was pretty much a wake-up call for the officers in Cincinnati, including myself, that people wanted the same thing. Officers and residents who seemingly were adversaries in this process wound up realizing that they had a very, very common reason for being there, and their efforts to reach that goal became quite rewarding for everybody in the city.
Would you be a little more concrete, Senator?
Go ahead. Don't go in that sense, question. I guess my question is, will you all reach out to, would that be a part of an agreement with what you're describing there, be a part of that agreement, if you're trying to, that you would reach out to those various groups and have those kinds of meetings or those kinds of outcomes to come about, or is that something that's?
Is it part of the agreement with the Department of Justice? No, this would be, this would be as part of our strategy for addressing the issues that have been brought forward by the Department of Justice.
And you could give recommendations to the administration just on how they would be involved in that process, I'd say the chief of police and the mayor and the CIO, how they would be involved in that process.
Sure, and the process, Counselor, the process?
The process, Counselor, is much broader than that. It is not just having a meeting between the CIO, the mayor, and a small group of people or the business community or the chief meeting with members of a civil rights advocacy group. The process is much, much bigger. It involves...
operations, both identified the exact same goal that they were seeking to the end, at the end of this process, and that is mutual respect for each other. Each party that was involved in this process identified mutual respect, and that was pretty much a wake-up call for the officers in Cincinnati, including myself. The people wanted the same thing. Officers and residents who seemingly were adversaries in this process wound up realizing that they had a very, very common reason for being there, and their efforts to reach that goal became quite rewarding for everybody in the city.
I'm pretty careful about concrete terms.
Go ahead. I guess my question is, will you all reach out to, would that be a part of an agreement? With what you're describing there, would that be a part of that agreement, if you would reach out to those various groups and have those kinds of meetings, or those kinds of outcomes to come about, or is that something that's been...
Is it part of the agreement with the Department of Justice? No, this would be, this would be as part of our strategy for addressing the issues that have been brought forward by the Department of Justice.
And you could give recommendations to the administration just on how they would be involved in that process, I'd say the chief of police, and the mayor, and the CIO, how they would be involved in that process.
Sure, and the process, Councilmember. The process, I was thinking, the process, Councilmember, is much broader than that. It is not just having a meeting between the CIO, the mayor, and a small group of people, or the business community, or the chief meeting with members of a civil rights advocacy group. The process is much, much bigger. It involves determining what the right stakeholder groups are in this community, if that makes sense, who really has a concrete stake in the success of policing and reforming police community relations in Albuquerque. It involves getting them to large meetings in large spaces that the city owns or controls, large groups, small groups, work sessions, so that ultimately, they're boiling down for us collectively, for the city collectively, they're boiling down what their ideas and their goals are. So that we then, when we have the opportunity to work with our Justice Department colleagues, we know what those goals are. So it's not just, "Well, I met with 16 people, and this is what they told me." But we had 400 Albuquerque police officers show up, these are their concerns. We had 500 members of the civil rights community show up, and these are their concerns. We had the 132 neighborhood associations show up, I know you had a lot of them in Albuquerque. We had a lot of these people show up, and these are their concerns. And ultimately, we want to find common goals and common strategies, so that what ends up in our agreement is something that works for this city. It's not a cookie cutter, it's not off the shelf. It works for here.
Counselor Bennett, and Counselor Gibson, and we'll go back to Counselor on you.
When I met with the DOJ, one of the first questions I asked them is, you know, how do you see the role of the city government, where it's essentially a bicameral city government? And they made it pretty clear that they negotiate with the executive, and that's the way it's done. And that's fine. We, meanwhile, I think, listened to all of this comment that we talked about over the years in Albuquerque, have legislation before us, including legislation that would alter the civilian oversight process for the police department, and one that actually has to do with the selection and service of the chief, that might go for the voters if that moves forward this fall. I guess my question, and I asked, got some opinions from DOJ about this, but I'd like your opinions about moving forward with this kind of legislation. I think the report, of course, stated, has some opinions certainly about the civilian oversight process. So given the fact that we've got that for us right now, would you suggest we keep moving forward with this and keep all of that debate going? Do you see any contradiction there, or possible conflict between that work and what you're going to be discussing with the DOJ?
A few minutes ago, I think I said, in response to a question, we really will need this council to do things that are legislatively necessary, as part of the agreement, when we're ready to do it. There will be a component on civilian oversight, and we want to have the best model for civilian oversight that we can have, from best practices, from national models, and that works for this community. And ultimately, when you're ready, when we're ready to have that discussion, you'll get briefings from us in executive session on what that might look like. I would urge you not to prospectively put some things in place that might be harder to undo in an agreement, but let me be very clear, you need civilian oversight, you're going to have civilian oversight, and we want to give you civilian oversight and work with you to craft that for a way that looks for this city, so it's going to happen. So you should continue to have the conversations.
Mr. President, thank you. And, yeah, just to be clear, I'm an active legislator that's before the council at this time, and there's no shortage of opinions about what's right or wrong within that legislation. It's based on the original oversight report, a previous report that we had, I'm sure you've heard of it, the Walker-Luna Report, very much aligned with what those recommendations were, how many years ago? Well, well over a decade ago, 15 years ago. So my inclination, you know, unless somebody convinced me otherwise, is we should continue to have that legislation out there for debate. I hear what you're saying, maybe we shouldn't be immediately enacting it, but I certainly think that there's a lot of interest in the public about the content of that legislation to support it, and Counselors Gargano and Winter. And so I just kind of really wanted to get that set, but I did hear, I think, a suggestion that we might not want to put it in final forum until such time as you're negotiating with the state.
In a number of cities that have had MOAs or consent decrees, where there's been changes to civilian oversight, what happens towards the tail end of the process is the lawyers, the legal team, will meet with council members in executive session and tell you what we think needs to go in to your ordinance. And then, you're the legislators, you write your ordinance. And if it's something that's then consistent with what we think our colleagues from the DOJ would accept, then that would be something we would want a green light for the council to move forward on. But you will end up with, you're going to end up with a great civilian oversight law, I am confident.
Counselor Gibson, and then Counselor Vice President Trump, and then Counselor...
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I do have a couple of questions. What other cities have you worked together in? And I'll let you answer that first.
Most recently, Miami Beach, Florida, we worked there. We've also been somewhere in Seattle, Washington.
Uh-huh. And how, I assume that you left their feeling, you know, successful, that you were able to help your police departments?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
How would you measure that success?
Different cities are at different stages in their processes. For example, Spokane, Washington, is a city we worked very closely with last year. Spokane is involved with us, they have an agreement with the Justice Department that's through the cops office of the Justice Department. They actually call that a collaborative agreement, because it's modeled after the work that we did in Cincinnati. It's where the city has a direct stake in deciding what its reforms are going to be, and it's setting goals for itself. So it's more of a form of technical assistance and some oversight, rather than the model I think we're looking at here in Albuquerque. So we work with Spokane on their implementation, and I think they've been very pleased. And I know we've given the city attorney those references with the judges we've worked with, and the chiefs we've worked with, with the city governments that we've worked with. This is an achievable process in Albuquerque. I wouldn't be here, and Chief Stryker wouldn't be here if we didn't think that you could do exactly what we did, and exactly what some of those cities have done. Las Vegas, Nevada, is another city that we've done a little bit of work with, and they're also in a collaborative model right now with the cops office. And I think they're going to have success too, because they also were a department that had allegations of excessive force, of unauthorized shootings, and they were able, they were able to identify those problems themselves and work out an agreement with the cops office to address those things.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Vice President, you have...
Thank you, Mr. President. I see some, one of the things that, some of the things we're looking at as a council, and the rewrite of the ordinance about free civilian oversight. I see there's potential for a conflict with what we think could be correct, and what the DOJ might want, with collective bargaining, you know. What trumps?
Federal law trumps. Federal law trumps. And I'm just going to be very blunt to the council, you deserve our unfettered, unfiltered advice. The agreement that you reached with the Justice Department will trump, that said, of course, we need the officers of APD. You need the officers of APD. It's incumbent on the city and the administration to be fair with the officers of APD. And ultimately, when we're through with this process, I expect that there will be a resolution of the outstanding issues between APD officers and the administration. We owe them no less.
Thank you.
Counselor Harris, and then Counselor...
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Sarah. I just want to be clear on this issue about which trumps, because I heard about this in terms of collective bargaining agreement and any consent decree, federal law, but it's my concern that if we have a collective bargaining agreement that's in place, and then we have a collective bargaining agreement, sorry, let's start again, we have a collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers Association, and then we have a consent decree that's signed by a federal judge, I think the easy answer is the federal court decision trumps collective bargaining agreement or something like that. But I think the more difficult answer is how do we unwind that? At that point in time, we may have to find our way out of it. It just doesn't, I mean, in other words, the collective bargaining agreement just doesn't go away, there would be some order that the city might have to do to make it go away, which might cost us a lot of money. Is my analysis correct?
The council member is correct, and if you want a more detailed legal analysis, you would have to do that in executive session. I would just say, it's not inconceivable that you may have some issue that comes up in this process, and we're all going to have to work our way through that collectively. And we have to work in good, when I say, we represent the city of Albuquerque, including all of you, the elected representatives of the people, the population, that also means we represent the community of Albuquerque. And we've got to get this right, and you really need not just an agreement with the Justice Department, you need equity and fairness for your officers as well. And so we want their voices to be heard, and I know this council will do the right thing when it comes to them as well.
Okay, I just want to be clear that a consent decree does not automatically surgically pull out a vision from the public.
Correct.
And something else that came up, and I think, looking at this thing was good, but perhaps you can help me with this, is that, I mean, police officers, when they are considering what force to use, I mean, don't they have to be aware of respecting the constitutional rights?
We require them to by law, and we require them to do so morally, legally, and ethically. They deserve that, and the community deserves that. And they deserve the best possible training so that they know what people's constitutional rights are. Because constitutional policing and effective policing are not only not incompatible, they go hand in hand.
So our police officers essentially make the decision of a constitutional package in every way.
That's always an opportunity for them, each and every day, and each and every radio, each and every contact they have with a citizen, yes, there was the opportunity there generally to make a constitutional decision.
Thank you. Counselor, do you have...
Thank you, Mr. President. To that point, it seems like oaths that are taken by police officers, we take oaths that say very directly that we will uphold the constitutional of the United States. So that's already settled, you know, and that'll be getting bargained in that way, collectively or otherwise.
Speaking from our experience, that was the very first paragraph in our consent decree, that the police department slash city of Cincinnati agrees to engage in constitutional policing. The oath of office was disregarded, of course, I'm concerned, because it was as though it was not theirs. I don't know if the Department of Justice would still conduct themselves in that fashion, but they may. My thought is, it's a method for them to reinforce the fact that this is an established goal, an established demand by law for all police officers throughout the United States. Part of the answer to the question is how we set expectations in this city for how this process goes, and how your officers are going to implement it. Officers are expected to know what people's constitutional rights are. And we, as a city, and APD leadership, as command staff, and the administration, and the city, you have the responsibility to make sure that your officers are not just minimally trained, but they are trained to the fullest extent that we can provide on protecting people's civil rights, and how to protect civil rights and civil liberties, and do effective policing. They need the training, they require the training. Part of the process will be to provide them as much training as they absolutely need.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just read very quickly. Quote, "The public is demanding that we find ways to enforce the laws that do not violate standards of decency and fairness. All of us with criminal justice responsibilities must continually examine and reexamine every aspect of our work to make certain it is fair as well as legal. There is no person who should be immune from criticism, and no practice that should be shielded from healthy skepticism." Can you imagine that was by William Saxby, Attorney General, in 1974? So these things have been instilled, have been codified for years, in 70, '76 probably. So no one can say that it's something that is new, or something that's done, or we should train people to understand. That should be performed, that should be something that anyone who is in public service should understand. So constitutionality aside, everybody should know that the whole sense of fairness is paramount in any kind of exchange, whether it be police with civilian, citizen, or chief with subordinates, anyone needs to know that that's the function, and that's the conduct that's expected. But really, what I wanted to point out, more so than that, is that I haven't heard really a commitment from yourselves, and I haven't heard it from the administration, that the public will be engaged. I heard a lot about how we're going to listen to the public, and we're going to have listening sessions, but I haven't even heard anyone say the public will have a forum in which they ask the questions and they expect answers, not some kind of replay tape. I haven't also heard that it's going to be a public-directed discussion. That's the kind of thing that I think we need to set up, so that the public knows that they're there to tell us, and to have here, but also tells you folks what they think needs to be done, not the other way around. So I want to hear what's going to happen.
You have our commitment, what we describe as a collaborative process is fully engaging of the community. It involves the whole community, not handpicked sectors of the community, not people who are identified by one officer or another, by the administration or by the department. It really is a very broad process. And we'll be working with the human relations group of the city to develop, because they've already been doing some of this work on issues of mental health. So we're going to be working with them on some of the logistics of doing large-scale public meetings to get exactly this type of input. So you have our commitment.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, we don't have to be very far to find out who are the folks who are really involved, because they've been coming here for two and a half years. So all we have to do is, we play tapes, find out who they are for other, for various reasons, so we can probably play those same tapes to find out who they are and who we need to be talking to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let me just begin by saying that I have been impressed by what you have said this evening, and most importantly, is that you are going to involve the community. You've given that community to the community. Many members of this community that have been here for the last four years need to be engaged and be involved in these issues. I was also very impressed when you stated that you were here this morning at 6:00, meeting with several of the police officers of the community. They need to be engaged, they need to be involved. I believe after the Department of Justice came out with the report that our Albuquerque Police Department has been critically wounded by what has taken place, and we need to work with you, with the community, with the administration, to assure that we are making the changes that will restore confidence in men and women that serve our community. I think it's vitally important. But again, I would hope that you would also be back here addressing the council. I know that one of the statements was made, that the initial contract was signed, that there may be future contracts in place, based on the timeframe that you were here. I met also last week with the Department of Justice, and one of the statements that was sent to me and to the group that I was with, that they were trying to expedite this process. I think it needs to be expedited, but at the same time, I think we need to do the job properly and do it right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your time, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, members of the council.
Okay, let's proceed to the next title on the agenda, economic development. There is no agenda item for economic development this evening. Have any questions, question and answer? Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. My question to the administration...
And we need to make sure there's room for individuals in the city, because they cannot stand at podium, which the name has been called. The first speaker is Diana Vargas, followed by Carissa Lewis, followed by Karen Cappel, followed by Nora Laye. followed by Nora Laye. Welcome, Miss Vargas.
So I feel that whatever your decision is tonight about the chief, it should definitely include things like authority and not consent, because consent is sort of just like I agree. If they don't agree, they're not going to do it. That's by definition anyways, but don't trust me, look it up. The POC should be decided by the people and council as well as police, not, not by, oh, where are they at? We said very carefully.
Will you please pay your earnings?
Uh, these are here to see the community, and they're not, so I was community and wanted to tell them something, but they're not here at school. It's not the deal.
Just gross.
So you, okay, so, um, these two people here said that they're here by appointment of the mayor, but they're paid by the people. And, uh, and they do answer the council. They don't come in here and act like this is their house, this is our house. And there are police departments too, and we'll get through what we've got to get through at the end of the day, but we're not going to ask people that, that, uh, that were invited by ex-chief Schultz, who works for Taser Gate, he works for Taser Gate, the ex-chief of Cincinnati, right? I asked everybody to Google their names like a couple months ago, or, you know, a few council meetings ago, nobody did that either, but, you know, it's cool, we'll just, we'll just keep pushing the same dirty money under the same dirty table. Because that, that sounds about right, but they're not here, like they said, oh, I want to, let me see, let me find a quote here. It's just something, um, you know, uh, we've been in the police departments and, and all of these communities, they haven't been in my community. They can't even name how many communities we have, but yet, they got a plan, right? They're going to reform Albuquerque, that we need outside house, because all of a sudden we have no, no smart people here in Albuquerque to fix our own problems. So, so we got to call somebody else and waste more money, you know? Top of the 1.6, where's, where's Brad? You know, he's missing the whole equation. You know, so I brought something, nobody freak out, you know, I know I was supposed to bring it, the Constitution, you know, it's a gift to all of you, you might want to give it to these people too. And at the end of the day, that's, that's free.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. Appreciate it, thank you. Carissa Lewis, followed by Chris Phillips. Please do the whole applause. We've got 50 people.
Oh, I cut here.
Welcome, Ms. Phillips.
Alliance is, um, I came to America with my family to avoid depression. We came to Chicago when I was three or four. My cousins in Kiev take freedom seriously. In Chicago, my father worked at the ACLU the last 15 years of his life. In Chicago, my husband and I owned a homeless men's shelter, one of the last in the city of Chicago, and a large psychiatric residential facility, seven stories. I have experience in matters that we're dealing with. I also have intelligent judgment. So when my 21-year-old U N M engineering student's son was murdered on July 10th, 2009, I realized there was serious corruption in town. And since 2009, I have repeatedly dealt with federal agents and the DOJ and the FBI, most of whom say, yeah, we know they're corrupt. Why don't we get a lawyer? When I went to the house after my son was killed, walked into the garage, saw the detective there, I said, there's something wrong here. Is this some kind of cop gang, bad word, S H I T? This is what he said. Bottom line, APD is the gang. And what I would like to see done is Operation Gray Lord, 1982 in Chicago. Look that up on your FBI website. Seventy people, prosecutors, police, judges, lawyers, prosecutors, gone.
Thank you. Good morning, partners. Karen Catherine, followed by Nora Laye, followed by Jennifer O. If you would speak into the microphone.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Karen Catherine. Um, good evening, I'm Cindy Capela. I'd like to invite everyone to the 2014 Summit on Community Violence. It's, um, by the New Mexico Attorney General Gary King invites you to the second annual summit on community violence now at the Copper Point Church. Um, and the topic's safety, public safety in our community, and then actually someone from APD will be there to talk about that. And then, of course, a lot of the rest of them were there too, and it's open for the public, and it is no registration fee. There's been many talks that happened on many topics. And I know there is the mental health one, and I've seen some orchestras there, and I'm glad they were there at the Southeast talks. And I know there was one in the North Valley, and there is more mental health talks that are to go on. Um, I'm glad to see on the, the agenda here for the coming of, for the state of New Mexico, the city of Albuquerque, and Burnley County, um, to address mental health issues in the inner states. Um, I think that's very important, and I'm glad that State Martins is involved in that too, because I heard that on the break point, that they're going to help and train. Um, so I appreciate those steps that are being made. Um, and I also hope that all this reform goes somewhere, not just talk, because we've had a lot of talk. It's time for action.
Thank you. Next speaker, Nora Laye. Please do the applause. Ms. Laye.
Thank you very much, shout out, President, Councilman. I wish you a firm body of attention. I had felt like there wasn't attention given to us enough, and I feel that now everyone has a God, including myself. With all due respect again, I feel most importantly to talk about the, um, APD chief should be elected. I believe that is important, but also to have some kind of a backup to where if there is something that has been definitely wrong, that needs to be brought to the attention of the Councilman and be able to be the reprimandium or even take him out of office. Mr. Rockberry is, uh, of course absent, just like Mayor Berry, and that even one good thing that Mayor Berry would have been able to do is to consult with his public. Of course, that's his prerogative, and I guess Mr. Perry is also. Please understand that we are needed forward. I believe that each and every one of us has been through a lesson learned, and I think there is one important factor, when Mr., um, when the guy that came up to talk about the reform, both the public laughed, and that's what we have laughed. And I believe that we should at least be first. And it wouldn't hurt to break bread with us, it wouldn't hurt to talk one on one, it wouldn't hurt to be.
Thank you very much. Your time is running out. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Jennifer O., Bob Martinez, Drew Osterman, Dr. Barry.
Well, my dad, he's very dear. He is a retired military officer and a CIA agent. My dad died from exposure to more chemicals used in the Vietnam War. My family spent their holidays at the military cemetery in San Francisco. I'm having proof that APD chose to die its citizens. APD never gave up on me, showing me tough luck with arrests, taking me to the hospital and rehab. I'm recovering from PTSD and depression as a result of my husband being killed by a drunk driver. Look at me now, I have my own business, and I'm finishing my college degree this fall. Thank you to Governor Martinez, Mayor Berry, Chief Eden, APD, Albuquerque Fire Department, and currently Air Force Base for making our city safer. Crime has gone down since the year 2000. Okay, and here's the statistics right here. Look, that's, that's, uh, 2012 data right there. I apologize, I don't have the current. The answer to this is to stop settling APD lawsuits, put that money into mass rehab. Honest taxpayers don't want to know in Detroit and are afraid to speak for themselves. Settling APD lawsuits only adds to the problem. Copycat state shootings for lawsuit money are the result and the new criminal racket. Most APD protesters are not even U.S. citizens and do not live in New Mexico. These people traveled to cause chaos in our city. Thirty million dollars in APD lawsuit claims have been paid out. One person received eight million dollars. These same people are here today saying nothing has been done to compensate their families. These lawsuits need to be given to federal judges, courts, injuries to be constitutional. Let the courts weigh the evidence. Settling these lawsuits is unconstitutional to the taxpayers. I'm warning honest police, firefighters, veterans, military, and civic leaders that multimillion dollar bounties are on your heads and your families as well. And foreign enemies are paying for these shootings.
Your time is over. Thank you. Bob Martinez, Drew Osterman. Welcome, Ms. Phillips.
I'm Paul Martinez, Attorney Governor of the Police and Mexico State President. I come before you tonight to report on my attendance at the 33rd Annual National Peace Officers Memorial Service in Washington, D.C., which was held on May 15th, 2014. May 15th of February, which was claimed as National Peace Officers Memorial Day by President John F. Kennedy on October 1st, 1962. I also come before you tonight to honor the memories of Albuquerque police officers Richard Smith and Michael King, who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty on August 18th, 2005, protecting and serving the citizens of Albuquerque. Likewise, I want to honor the memories of Burnley County Sheriff's deputies Jimmy McCray, who made the ultimate sacrifice on March 27th, 2006, and Dean Miero, who made the ultimate sacrifice on October 29th, 2010. And that of San Ball County Deputy Sheriff Sergeant Robert Behrens, who made the ultimate sacrifice on December 6th, 2013, and was placed on the wall this year. These law enforcement officers lost their lives in the line of duty protecting and serving the citizens of the respective communities. On May 15th, 2014, the nation honored 112 men and women from.
Have a conference with the creation of two commissions. There's been a lot of discussion about a police oversight commission, and what I'd like to propose is a police policy commission. And I can give, what I mean by a police policy commission is a commission composed of a community representative as well as the, as the, as the police department and their representatives, to actually plan policy for the police, and, and rather than let it become a de facto policy that's created by circumstances. And let me just give you some circumstances. There was a recent article on the web that described the, an attempt by both the DOJ and American Bar Association to counter number of federal offenses that have been created by Congress over the years. And neither one of them could come up with a number. And so the result of something like that is that, um, there's so many laws, you add federal offenses to state law, to ordinances, that basically someone has to choose how to prioritize and enforce those laws. And right now, that's basically up to the police department. I'd like to see that up to a public commission. So that would be a good reason for creating a public policy commission. And the details of it could be worked out. We're going to submit a proposal to the Department of Justice and the end of the day, the community involvement tomorrow, and I'll send you a copy of this as well, so you'll see where it is proposed.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Cast. Solio Delangelo, followed by Frank Ortega, followed by Pete Aranda, followed by David Ortiz, followed by Edward Sandel.
Where is Chief Eaton? They should be standing right up front here. You know that, that double talk you got from a disgraced police chief in Cincinnati, and that civil rights attorney is a waste of eighty, seventy thousand of our tax dollars? This cop should have been fired. This cop should have been fired. And Chief Schultz, who is a fellow Taser employee, recommended to his mayor to hire these two people. We have very qualified civil rights attorneys. We have retired cops that are great people. We're wasting seventy grand on those people? That's a disgrace to the, to you, it's a disgrace to every person in this city. You know, the restrictions you placed on Thursday are illegal, and you'll find that out very soon in the courts. You know, you don't respect that flag. It's okay for you to have it, but it's not okay for me to have it. And, and the question is why? Is my flag different than the one back there? No answer? You know, you're wasting a lot of tax dollars. The chief appointed two new majors. Why didn't you make, uh, point nine? Why didn't you make nine? Why didn't you make fifteen of them if you want to waste tax payables dollars? You know, why didn't you make a junior and a, and a senior chief and, and, I mean, it's ridiculous. You know, let me, let me show you something else. By your favorite, by the mayor's famous attorney, he has complete disdain for the DOJ, as do these two hired people. You know, they treat him like clowns. They, and you do too. You know, your council meeting on Thursday was televised throughout the nation. I got calls from, from people all over the country showing you, showing me, you're as disgraceful as APD is, as his mayor is. You should feel good about yourself.
Frank Ortega, followed by Pete Aranda, followed by David Ortiz.
Mr. President, councilors, first of all, those two people, look, look at tapes there. Look at your computers and find out whose faces you see up there. Next is, you know, everybody disregards the employees of Albuquerque. There's a lot of employees. There's garbage men, there's, uh, street, there's, uh, water, everything, even secretaries that are very making a living. And we're talking about, and they haven't had a contract for so long, and they, uh, take all of your, your income off, and they live on theirs. They live from week to week, some of them. And you know what? It's a disgrace what we've done to the other city employees. Thank you.
Thank you. We hold your applause. Pete Aranda, followed by David Ortiz, followed by Edward Sandel, followed by Neil Rosenbaum, followed by Charlie Okie. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. Thanks for taking into consideration M 14-3 on genetically engineered food. I'd like to thank Councilmen Benton and Gibson for bringing this to the floor. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about civil rights and human rights and constitutional rights. And certainly having genetically engineered food labeled so that we can have our right to choose, I think is part and parcel of those rights. I've worked in the food industry for 30 years here in New Mexico. La Montanita Co-op, where I've been a manager for those 30 years, has built an organization that's based on that right to choose for communities. We know in the industry that people change their labels all the time, and I don't believe that it will add any cost to the price of food to require this mandatory labeling. And I really honor you for bringing this to the floor and putting Albuquerque out in a very positive way in the world, to be one of the first cities, or one of the many first cities, that will require mandatory labeling here. If any of you are interested, we would welcome you to come to La Montanita Co-op. We would love to host you and talk about these issues in a deeper way with you, and thank you for your support. And I hope that you will all vote for the memorial, M 14-3 on labeling genetically engineered food. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will vote. Next speaker, Ms. Cirdavell, followed by Neil Rosenbaum.
Thank you, councilors. Ernest Cirdavell, I know from these meetings, from the press, and from speaking to some of you personally, the level of frustration with the public perception that you still do not understand the APD crisis. I know personally that some of you do, however, from the public perspective, this is what we see, nothing. Nothing. We see no change. I want to reference the two hirees of absentee mayor, who did get out to the mayor's ball on Friday, but he hasn't been here to hear any of our concerns about his terrorist thugs. The main thug who makes a hundred and fifty-eight thousand now a year. You could do service to the community by cutting off the funding for that thuggery, just as well as cutting off the increased thuggery for Rob Perry. A twenty-two percent raise to a hundred and eighty K for, for the public abuse of Rob Perry and Gilbert Montano, twenty-eight percent raise, while we have hardworking, middle-class folks with families who can't pay the rent. Because you're going to privatize the offices. That's what we need to see. We need a cessation of the Police Oversight Commission. It's proven it does not work. Um, the, the, Mr. Greenwood and Striker, who both stood up here on behalf of the mayor, erroneously stated on April 10th, the world changed. The world has not changed. APD is still executing citizens. Nothing has changed. The execution of Mary Hawes, based on the report of the coroner, in total disregard of what Officer Deere said. Timothy Guttermann, why did the police eliminate this terrorist who cost the city a three-hundred-thousand dollars and eliminate him?
Thank you. We will have order in these papers, please. Niels? Rosenbaum? Charlie Kupoki? Followed by Tony Perez.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Niels Rosenbaum. I'm a psychiatrist and I work with the Albuquerque Police Department. Been working there for seven years on and off. And I just wanted to say a few things. One, I came here because I heard there was going to be a discussion about health issues in the community. I want to say that I've worked with detectives in the field, and these are outstanding people, as smart and as good meaning, well-meaning as anybody I've met in medical school, family practitioners. These people want to make a difference and help people with mental illness. Also, I want to reiterate some of the things about a larger conversation involving the community. We are, are doing that, we are in the process of that. We have been invited to many community meetings, and we have been in discussions about starting a crisis center, and that group invited APD representatives to come be part of that. So I just wanted to let you know that there is a large community conversation going on, and I do support APD. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gerdu, sir.
Uh, Counselor Gerdu, I think I have a question for you. No? Sure.
And it's not a question as such, but you understand that no one on this council and no one in the public says that every single officer is corrupt, is bad, is terrible. But I think when we get into those discussions, that's when people start polarizing so much that there's no middle ground. So I want to tell you that there are very good officers. What we're talking about is getting rid of, or at least retraining, or somehow, like Mr. Cirdavell said, something happens so that there's a change, not so that we have two sides that forever remain two sides. I think that's the main thing, and that's all I would really say. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome. Thank you. Charles Kupoki, followed by Tony Gerard, followed by Peter Simonson.
I'm going to try without anybody's help to see if I can get my computer here to stay on the overhead so you can see it. Is there a way to zoom it out a little bit? I want to get the whole, the whole sentence. Okay. Were you able to? Is it in focus? Can you see it? Yes. Okay. Um, Charlie Grassi, um, I have to say quickly, just before I go on the other point again, I have concerns with the so-called interim rule enforced, because they've not been formally and lawfully adopted, according to the charter, the rules of the council, or the New Mexico Public Open Meetings Law. But I have hope, from what I've seen, that the council is beginning to understand some of the problems, and I think it's trying to take some steps to start finding solutions. Key to that is going to be openness, respect, and the following of the law by the law enforcement agencies, and accountability when it's, when it's not followed. I just want to point out to you here, this is a response I got to a public address request a month ago that still has not been provided by the APD, for two simple pages of paper that should've taken about an hour. But it's also a standard request that I've seen now, one hundredth of requests. And I want to read to you what the language says. It says, "We will continue our review and contact you prior to the expiration of fifteen days from the receipt of your request." Now, what I post here for you is actual New Mexico law, fourteen dash two dash eight, subsection D. A custodian receiving a written request shall permit the inspection immediately, or as soon as is practicable under the circumstances, but not later than fifteen days after receipt of a written request. And it goes on, if the inspection is not permitted within three days, the custodian shall explain in writing when the records will be available. And you can read the rest yourselves. The point is, when you get a standard request returned without regard for what the request is making, including routine records that say we are going to take fifteen days at minimum, the police department is not respecting and following the law. I'm hoping the council can...
Thank you. Right. As a thank you... Tony Kuper, followed by Peter Simonson.
Welcome, sir. Thank you. My name is Tony Gerard, and I'm a victim of PTSD by cop. PTSD by cop is very real. I, I'm sorry to say that I can't feel comfortable addressing issues in this room with all these guns here. I have PTSD, like I said, and I get very nervous, so please excuse me if I shake too much. I'd like you to respectfully demand that guns be expelled from this room, because I just can't feel comfortable, like I say. And addressing the issue of the DOJ, I would respectfully request that we have some more meetings with the DOJ. I strongly believe that people have to be on these councils. People have to be in the Department of Justice, or, you know, the Oversight Commission. And people should also be on the city council. And they should work with the ACLU. Also, the state of New Mexico forgets three important things: civil rights, constitutional rights, and Miranda rights. Because of police actions out of control in the United States, I don't believe that too many arrests have been made constitutionally under the Miranda law. I've never really heard anybody have their rights read to them when they're arrested. On top of that, I would like to have the arrests of the police chief and all the other police officers involved in murders over these years, and especially for the veterans. I can't stand it to hear that veterans are being killed and assassinated by police. We have people coming back from service that are killing veterans, they're working for police departments. I can't see it.
Thank you. I'd still like the arrests of the... Peter Simonson, Bianca Jigunaru, Stephen Baca, and Joseph Torres.
Welcome, sir. Mr. President, members of the council, thanks, Peter Simonson. I'm the executive director for the ACLU of New Mexico. Couple quick comments about Scott and Tom presented to you earlier today. We spoke with Scott and Tom both on a number of different occasions, and I actually wanted to lend my support to them. We found them both to be very committed to the process of reform, to the interests of reform. I don't think that there's anybody more knowledgeable about the reform process and how to work with the DOJ and the community and the, and the officers to try and get a, a workable reform process in motion. It is true that they serve a client, the mayor, and that's something that we will have to watch for as, as we proceed in this whole, in this whole process. And it may be indeed that we as the ACLU at some certain point find ourselves in conflict with the opinions of Scott. And as you know, Scott serves on the National ACLU Board, among other ACLU commitments that he has. But at the end of the day, we do feel like they are a good team. I wanted to turn to some concerns about the interim rules for public comment that have been put forward for tonight. I can't go into the details during this time, but let me just say that we're, we're concerned that these rules do not in fact meet the standards for narrowly tailored ordinance that protects free speech rights. Concerns about the provision that limits signs, props, or any other media, the breadth of that requirement, and the one that any person who violates these rules may be cited for trespassing. If you have a question, if the rule in fact implies with Article Three, Section Two of the City Council Rules of Procedure, which reads that rules may be amended, repealed, altered, or rescinded by a vote of the majority of all councilors, and only after one week's notice of an intended motion, six notes, so you present it in writing at a regular meeting of the city council. We'd be happy to submit detailed comments in writing, but I'd be happy to look closer at the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman...
Mr. President, I do have a question for the council. Are you familiar with the, the rules in the City of Santa Fe, the City Council of the City of Santa Fe, and their rules regarding signage in the, in their chambers, or just other rules that they have regarding decorum?
President, members of the council, I'm not aware of the specific language that Santa Fe uses.
Yeah. And I'm just interested in your thoughts on that, and I'd love to have that discussion with you. It's interesting, some of the, you know, some of the rules that they have and put in place that I think are, that really reflect, I think, the recent rules that we've put in place here over the last few weeks, but I'd be interested just to hear your thoughts on those.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for that. I certainly understand that the council is struggling to balance the need for early meetings with free speech rights. Our concern is the breadth and the vagueness in some of the language. I think there's ways to tighten that up, to make it workable for, for folks and for them to still be able to express themselves effectively in accordance with their rights. But I'd be happy to talk about that offline, to provide some, just to provide some documentation.
Counselor Perez.
And Mr. Simonson, did you also know, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but all these constitutional issues have, are kind of a balancing test. And in bodies like this, I think when there is a problem or a verdict, the council president does have some authority to, to do some things to evade that verdict while we kind of have a moment to think things through. I mean, we're here to ask you, you know, listen.
Mr. President, members of the council, absolutely, the council needs to do what it needs to do to maintain early meetings. On the other hand, there's never a point when our basic rights under the Constitution can be suspended. And I think our concern, again, is that the way these rules are currently written, they may go beyond what's allowable under the law.
Yeah, well, could you give with us, because I think what we'd like to do, and agree with the council president, which is that do what they do in Santa Fe, do what they do in every courtroom in this state, federal state, do what they do in the state legislature, do what they do in Congress, which is, people come here, if they want to come with money and to speak, they may, but this sort of cardinal atmosphere where you have people waging signs and things, I think we've just reached the point where I think that has to stop. And if you have any language that would help us accommodate that goal, because we hold up signs, people who are sitting behind the seat, and the city council have to be able to choose how these chambers work, if we allow a flag on that railing, and we have to allow everyone else to vote whatever they want, and so forth. So we need to maintain some sort of order. If you have suggestions about how we do that, we'll be out here.
And Mr. Simonson, I think that our staff and our legal team has also been in communication with your office, isn't that correct?
Uh, Mr. President, members of the council, I'm not aware that we have been able to have any communication with the city attorney's office, but I, this came to us late today, so I, I may have missed something.
And I was told by our legal staff that they've been in communication with you. I think the Mr. Zaman has also been in communication with the ACLU. Maybe not you specifically, but your staff. Thank you. Thank you. Bianca Jigunaru, followed by Stephen Baca, followed by Joseph Torres, if pronounced correctly, I apologize.
No problem. I'm Bianca Jigunaru. I'm a homeowner and a business owner, and I didn't come to speak today about parks and rec, but I'm in the city parks and dog parks and walk a lot every day, see them working. Those guys work hard and they do a good job. And I'm in Isaac Benning's district, casinos, and they've done some really important work around there lately. And I hate to see the medians go to the, the solid waste department, because how are they going to take care of those trees and bushes? I don't think they know anything about that. And I think it behooves all of you and the entire city to have the area around downtown to continue to improve. So I wanted to say a word of support for them, because I appreciate what they do as a citizen. Of course, I'm also concerned about the APD issue. I wanted to tell you that I agree that the police chief's position should no longer be solely the jurisdiction of a mayoral appointment. I think that makes it a political appointment. It politicizes the position. And I really think that that also impacts, if we get a good police chief, they may not last into the next administration if it's not to the liking of the incoming mayor. So I would like to see that change, as to whether or not it becomes a publicly elected position or city council position. I'm not sure what ultimately is going to be better. I look forward to the debate on that question. I do think that what we saw at the last public meeting, or at the last city council meeting, and what we've seen in recent times, unfortunately, the lesson that citizens, the citizens of Albuquerque have learned for over two decades, as you well know, there have been complaints and calls for reform, and civic leadership has been tempered at best. And what people of this city have learned is that if they want to be taken seriously, they have to go take to the streets and create discord. So I applaud some of the movements that have been made on your part. If city council doesn't have the power to make real change, we need to change the structure of the city and the city charter so that you can take power and enforce what the people need, you represent, in our city government. We just have you here as puppets to make us feel good. It doesn't really solve the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen Baca, followed by Joseph Torres.
Hello, good evening, city council. I would like to say, first off, I'd like to say thank you, officers, for keeping us safe and kicking criminals off the streets. Asking the city council to really look at reforming the Police Oversight Commission suggestion, because the system works, it has its butt, and it has its bumps like any other government agency. If this is done, the members of the commission need to be fully impartial and need to go through a selection process as jurists for a court go through a selection process. The current members of the POC also need to be, need to be looked at to make sure they are impartial. I'm also speaking on the current proposed P-14 bills. I am in support of a change to how the chief is chosen, but not these current proposals. I have changed my position. Mayor Berry has micromanaged APD, and that's how the police chiefs do their job. I am only in full support of the council being able to approve the police chief, but they also need to give the chief some protection. The mayor shouldn't be able to single-handedly hire and fire the police chief if he wants, if he wants to fire the police chief, he needs to go through the council. The chief needs to be separate from the mayor's office. I am in support of the police chief being an elected position only if the requirements to run for the position are very strict. Candidates should be required to have many years of law enforcement experience. Some don't agree with this because it makes the chief a political position. When you really look at it, the chief is already a political position, just happens to be an appointed political position. The people and the officers being able to select the chief is a good idea, as long as candidates have many years of law enforcement experience. I'm also asking the city council to, yes, and giving the officers their pay raises. Thank you.
Mr. Baca, Joseph Torres, and then the last speaker before we take a dinner break will be Mike Moment, and I'm doing his follow-up.
President Sanchez, the distinguished council, I'd like to applaud you and your work on the budget that's pending for the next fiscal year, especially the committee as a whole. It looked like it was a very balanced budget on several different levels, and appreciate a lot of the various appropriations that were made, including keeping many of our libraries open and things of that nature. I'd like to just put my words of affirmation for like a hybrid version of the legislation that's pending to bring before the voters of Albuquerque. I think in essence that the executive branch should be able to present a candidate for the chief of police. I know in one of the legislations, the chief of the fire department is in there as well, not to show the gravity of some of the systemic issues with that particular apartment. But if the executive branch is able to present that to the city council, and the city councils are to take the opportunity to, to vet that particular candidate, or if there's a handful of candidates, then at that time, if that particular candidate is put up for a vote in essence, very similar to some of the judicial appointments of either an affirmation or a, a decline, I think that would perhaps be the best way to kind of integrate the various departments and help ensure that there's a checks and balances. Overall, I'd like to just appeal again for the community as a whole... Overall, I'd like to just appeal again for the community as a whole, that we just work in efforts to not continue to demonize and polarize different officials, even if there's things that are conflicts of interest, whether somebody's currently in office or those that have left office, I think we should continue the proper means, that I think there's some requests from the state auditor, things of that nature. So I think we just use the system that's in place, and as I mentioned previously, whenever there's systemic corruption in various countries or communities, you know, there's efforts to make that work within, you know, obviously, the past few council meetings, there's been some things that have taken place that are disturbing both from the public side, but also as far as some of the president is here escorting people out, in essence, for remaining silent, and I understand, you know, President Sanchez said you want things to be done decently and in order.
Thank you, Mr. Posner. Last two speakers before the break, Mike Gomez, followed by Andres Valdez.
Can you allow me to bring this, right? Over there, there. And keep it in the picture. I'm hoping that you will get rid of 25% of the mayor's lawyer staff, take back Perry's raise, and let's give it to the real, in-the-trenches workers of Albuquerque. They deserve it, they haven't got it. Even if you give them a 1% raise, just think, they haven't got a raise in years, and they've actually lost 2% to 3% a year of their buying power to inflation. So they really deserve a 5% raise at the minimum, but I've heard you guys have maybe come up with maybe a 3% raise. So they need some money somewhere. There's no more ABQ to plan, take money away from that, cut the lawyer staff, and see if they can get raises for maybe somewhere else on the big shots of the mayor. So just, all I can say is that we need our workers. I was at a car show Sunday at Tigway Park, over there by Old Town, beautiful car show, and using that park is well-groomed, you know, no little dandelions around, just beautiful. I went there on Sunday, and it was trashed. The lawn wasn't mowed, the weeds were growing, and I was wondering, you know, that's why they've cut back staff, and you need to give the real people, the real workers, a raise.
Thank you, Mr. Posner. Andres Valdez will be the last speaker before I begin the break.
Counselors, when you made interim rules regarding public comment in chamber decorum, you violated the open meetings law. I don't think you did that in an open meeting and followed protocol to do that. So look at that. Talking about the mayor's hired guns, Greenwood and Stryker, you know, they say that the DOJ will come up with solutions, that they will recommend to the mayor, that they want to engage the community, the stakeholders. We asked the DOJ, why the secret negotiations? What is there to hide? Make them public, make them open to the public, at least where we can observe them, you don't need to involve them. What about the condonment of human and civil rights violations by the mayor, the police chief, the justification of police murders by Kerry Brannenberg, our district attorney? Counselor Dan Lewis says the city council has done a lot. You know, they say they've heard from stakeholders that have come before you to bring concerns that is the mayor's consultants. Really? You said that you did amounts, oh, really, what you said, counselor, really amounts to nothing? You haven't fixed nothing? You had, maybe James Floyd, if you had done something, maybe James Floyd and the others would still be here with us. Frankly, most of you counselors have violated Article Eight of our charter, which is the human civil rights article right here, and have purposely and intentionally and have permanently violated the human rights article to our city charter number eight. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be taking a dinner break and return about eight AM. Thank you. Ted Nowitzki, followed by Ellen Wagner.
That's 40% of the mayor's budget for reforming DOJ is 20% of the lawyer's [inaudible], and what he's getting for it is four positions that DOJ didn't ask for, and it don't adjust what the DOJ is suggesting. For $400,000, I'm sure you could re-run DOJ standard operating procedures, I mean APD standard operating procedures, which DOJ wants, and get every officer trained on them with money left to spare, and that would be a one-time expenditure instead of $400,000, over $400,000, every year that the city is now in trouble for four unnecessary employees. What do we get for those four employees? We get a deputy chief with a background in what DOJ calls as an uncoordinated, undisciplined, poorly-trained SWAT team. We get a major who burned a man's ear off while two other officers were beating the man up, and now claims he learned from it and says he's a trainer, but it was officers under his command who killed James Floyd. And we get a public information officer, and I don't see where we're getting any more information about Alfred Webb line, Mary Cox, or Al Arvin Martin than we were getting before he hired this officer for $95,000 a year. You have asked for practical suggestions, I haven't. You have budget power. It's time you stopped giving the mayor a blank check and start demanding a return on investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Holcomb, Simon Polakowski, David Correia, Travis McKenzie, Pete Lopez, Richard Brandt.
Counselor President, counsel, earlier this evening, a psychiatrist for the Albuquerque Police Department took the palliative care. I'm unable, I'm here representing only myself, you are here representing the people of Albuquerque. You are the ones that can ask the questions. Why doesn't somebody ask him, a psychiatrist, a highly-trained professional, what kind of human being calls himself the human waste disposal? And a human being like this, worthy of being a police officer? These questions need to be asked. If a man like that refuses to answer a question like that, his licensed practice psychiatrist should be revoked. We're, you know, we're coming up here as individuals with our own opinions, we're trying to ask you to make, you know, ask questions, confront these people, so we can hear some real answers, and you have to ask these questions. Also, many times, representatives of the Albuquerque Police Officers Association come up here, we have Officer Lopez and Officer Willoughby, these people need to be asked real questions. I'm unable, as a citizen, to confront these people, ask them a question, but you, as our representatives, you should be asking these questions. If people are unable and unwilling to answer the questions in front of council to a satisfactory degree, they're not worthy of our trust, they're not worthy of our taxes. These people are our employees, we expect something in return. Also, I've heard a terrible rumor that U-Public is asking for more monies to operate the public access channel. The other day, I watched it, and they had the mayor on, if you want to know where the mayor is, he's on the morning brew three times on April Fool's Day, one hour after another. I hear they're asking for more money to operate, and I wonder if this rumor is true.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. David Corrella, followed by Travis McKenzie, followed by Pete Lopez, followed by Richard Brandt, followed by Antonio Aragon de Veralas, followed by Florentino Gonzalez. And again, what's your name that's been called to you? Please come to the front and be prepared to speak.
Lopez.
Put your name, call.
Sir.
Put your name, call.
Travis McKenzie.
Put your name, call.
Travis McKenzie.
Put your name, call. Put your name, call. Put your name, call. Put your name, call.
Hello. Good evening, council. My name is Travis McKenzie. I'm a co-founder of Project Feet the Hood and executive director of an organization called Grow the Future. It's an honor to be here tonight. I'm in support of M-14-3 for labeling genetically-modified organisms. I've dedicated my life to cultivating community health through organic agriculture and to fight, to care for our families, communities, and for our sacred mother earth. I've dedicated many years of my life to studying the dangers and problems with GMOs and the corporations that produce these chemical petroleum-based crops that are polluting our planet and poisoning our people and the ecosystems of our mother earth. It's important to label GMOs because as a citizen and consumer in this city, we have a right to know what is in the products that we consume. GMO crops and the corporations who produce them do not care for the health and well-being of our planet or our people. I hope Albuquerque stands up and protects its citizens and chooses to label GMO products and goods for the health and well-being of our families and for our communities. Beyond that, I hope Albuquerque makes a valiant effort to support local organic agriculture and not to support GMOs. Support our local organic farmers. Organic agriculture can create jobs, help strengthen our local economy. Albuquerque can stand up and become one of the most sustainable and environmentally friendly cities in the Southwest, and I hope you guys will choose to take residence and support M-14-3. Please label GMO products because we have the right to know. There are many countries who have banned genetic, the modified organisms and the products. There's millions of people marching this Saturday in solidarity against GMO products and goods, and so I ask you to protect the families and communities of the city of Albuquerque as we have a right to know what's in the products that we consume. Thank you very much.
What else you want to do? I have a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Travis. And thank you for the work you do in the community. Counselor, Counselor President, well, President at the time, I think, Jones and I supported Community Gardens Initiative and the resolution that passed, and it was mainly saying that we want people to grow food and know where food comes from, and that is absolutely in concert with what you're asking for. What we want is people to know what they have and not either a pop bottle or a whatever, or a bag of popcorn, that no one knows what's in it, and no one's saying you can't sell it, but if you're going to sell it, tell me what it is, and I think that's what you're asking, is that correct?
Definitely, and there's a lot of research to show that GMOs are actually creating health disparities across the world, and we should take the precedence to at least know what's in these foods that we're feeding our children, our elderly, you know, the daily products that we consume day to day, there's labels for gluten-free, for other things, and this is a health concern for millions of people, so I really hope that you guys will stand in support of M-14-3.
And just, a quick announcement, we could try to look at more.
It's very important, let people know that when folks like Travis are out in the community growing food, so that children know where food comes from, that it's important for them to know that that is pure, good, organic food. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Pete Lopez, followed by Richard Brandt, followed by Antonio Aragon de Veralas, followed by Florentino Gonzalez. Put your name, put your name to the record.
Good evening, President Sanchez and Counselors, my name is Pete Lopez. See if I can read this before I lose it. I'd like to apologize on my own behalf as a veteran for the unruly disruption of our last Monday meeting. It's my personal apology to all of you. We should be adults and act appropriately, but obviously, we don't. Anyway, one thing I always agree on is the system is broken, and then also too, before I continue, thank you, President Sanchez and Counselor Gargano, for not allowing Mr. Greenwood to bully this council, reminding him that he must include the people of Albuquerque. Mr. Greenwood made a comment that associations represent us as a whole. Not true. Associations do not reflect the fears and concerns of their neighborhoods. For example, I'm a member of Hassan, and they only have a handful, maybe 12, members. The Samhain community is over 2,500. This is a norm for all associations. Please make Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Striker accountable to the people of Albuquerque. Back to the broken system, we as the people of Albuquerque depend on the city fathers and moms, excuse the joke, to do the right thing for all of us. The powers of the council should oversee the responsible and be responsible for our future chief. Accountability is our primary goal. We will stop the conflict, let's work together to achieve accountability. We've lost so much time, we have fallen brothers, both veterans, people of Albuquerque, citizens of Albuquerque, and members of law enforcement. We're all people, we're all brothers. Let's move forward under accountability, take disciplinary powers away from APD. Too many officers with too many serious issues, and finally force the president, the present chief, to be accountable for his actions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Richard Brandt.
Thank you, thank you, City Council. One in four children born after the year 2000 are at high risk of developing type two diabetes. What's even more alarming, one in three minorities born after the year 2000 are at high risk of developing type two diabetes and becoming obese. We have a nation of sick people, and we have a nation of sick kids. My name is Richard Brandt, I'm a co-founder of Dragon Farm at South Valley Academy and the director, and the director of the Youth Food Action Project. Between the years 2010 and 13, students from South Valley Academy worked with UNF Research and Service learning students implementing gardens across school in Martinez Town and International District. Over 1,000 kids learned about healthy living by engaging in an experiential learning process, by learning how to grow their own food. They learned about healthy living and how to live a healthy lifestyle by choosing decisions on eating healthy and living a healthy life. Currently, I'm teaching at South Valley Academy, the sixth grade class, and we have a very novel program where students are involved with gardening activities, learning about community engagement, working together as a solid unit, and becoming active members of their community. The first week of school, we had a student through the self-class where the kids are learning about healthy living and through gardening, nutrition, and exercise. One kid could barely make it to the soccer field, he made it about a quarter mile, he was tired. What we're doing now, for their, classes are ending this week, for their final project is through their health class or through their self-class, they were required to produce product labels with nutritional content.
Mr. Brandt, thank you, I apologize. Counselor Gargano, quickly.
I guess I wouldn't be able to forgive myself if I didn't also lift up the work that Mr. Brandt does in the areas that are really needy, I don't know how else to say it, but when they work in the International District, when they work in the South Valley Academy, any of those areas, the children that walk away from those gardens know where the food comes from. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Okay, anyway, we need to know the right to know, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Antonio Aragon de Veralas.
Mr. President, my distinguished members of city council, my name is Anthony Harper-Aricon, also known as Antonio Aragon de Veralas. I'm one of the first, should I say, this age of military veterans to weed through a system that was not ready for us back in the early 2000s. A fourth-generation military descendant, all my, should I say, grandfathers and great-grandfather were war veterans, including myself. We provided, should I say, defense for our country even when our state was a territory through my great-granddad, who was from northern Mexico. I've served 26 years in the United States military, I have worked for the city of Albuquerque, Department of Family and Community Services, I did reach out to children in drug and counseling, I've done other programs.